All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the November 16, 2022 regular meeting to the Fenton Community High School District 104 to order. Unfortunately, President Ting Paul-Pong and Vice President Regal are unable to attend our board tonight, this evening. Therefore, I'm acting as president pro temp, and I have asked Member Jallowick to be act as secretary pro temp.
Thank you.
Mary, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Figaroa?
Here.
Hade?
Here.
Jallowick?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Redzinski?
Here.
Rego? Ting Paul-Pong?
Yes, we had a call. Thank you. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. James, please read the Fenton missions, beliefs, and bison weight statements.
Yes. Fenton mission statement: To cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. Just I love to say something like last Tuesday, it was the board member's date, and I want to congratulate you guys because you are in the top, even though you don't get paid, you are here, no matter what, and I really appreciate what you're doing for Fenton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leo.
Yes, we went to the public comments. Mary, do we have any new requests for public comments?
We don't this evening.
Thank you. James, we're going for the recognition?
Absolutely. Just like what President Pro Temp Figaroa was just saying, just an extension again, board members, John, Sylvia, Carrie, Kid who's not here, Juliet who's not here, Leo, Patty, thank you. Sometimes I know it feels like a thankless job. I know it's voluntary work, but you guys are changing lives. You guys are saving lives in so many ways. In particular, this last, I believe, since this group has been together for at least two years now, you've guys done a lot of work, whether it's fiscal, whether it's academic, whether it's extracurricular, just a lot of work. So again, thank you, thank you so much. In particular, unfortunately, one of our board members is her last board member, Patty Jallowick. Just a quick story with Patty. If you can, next slide, please. When I first became principal, Patty was the first one to congratulate me. I don't know if you remember that, Patty. It was out in doorway one, and just, you know, I think he gave me a hug, rubbed my shoulder or something, and said, "You're gonna do fine here." I was a little nervous. I'm not from, I didn't grow in Fenton. I was at different school districts, starting from the south side of Chicago, working through the public school, made it to Belvedere, then to Mundeline, and ended up here at Fenton. But thank you for those kind words. Another great story, just want folks to realize Patty's one of those board members. I would tell her, "Hey, look, we got some ELL students, new arrival, we need some gloves. We need some shoes. We need some socks." And Patty will always be there to provide those things, the first one to give, especially for kids in need. So thank you for that. That really made an impression on me as a principal, as well as a superintendent. So it's six years.
Six and a half.
From, from, six and a half. Six and a half in a couple of days. But from all of us in the administration, thank you so much.
I'm just gonna say something that I met Mrs. Jallowick back in 2010. And I was surprised that a girl was jumping in, whatever, like James said, "We need to do something." And they don't look at any other. It was you. And surprise, we've been together for the last eight years, hand by hand, and I was surprised that someone with that energy, it was behind the band boosters. Probably no band booster, we gotta be here, no band members, but Jallowick, it was there. Even after, you know, the performance of the band, she was the last one to walk out because she wanted to make sure that everything was in the right place. So we're gonna miss you a lot.
Thanks, Leo. Thanks.
I wanted to say something also. So now we have to nominate someone.
Yes.
To look at the budget.
Yeah, you gotta find somebody who's gonna do that and ask questions and take my place in that, okay?
So I cross paths with Patty a lot. You're everywhere. A lot of people know you. You're so dedicated to the school, but then when I leave school, you're everywhere. You're an honored and distinguished veteran, and I see you at all of those places, and I admire how much you stick up for veterans in our country. And Patty and I also serve at the food pantry. And just to see that spark in your eye and how much you haul it to make sure our neighbors have food, and you go up and down those stairs, and you make sure everyone else going up and down those stairs is capable of it, and they take a rest, and you advocate for us to have what we need to operate the food pantry. And then on the rare occasions that I find myself at Holy Ghost, the first thing I hear is, "Hey, do you know Patty Jallowick?" You're gonna be missed. There's gonna be a big void in this community when you go.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you for everything, Patty.
Thank you. Thanks.
And I just want to say a few things. You know, Patty, we've been together for, I guess, what, six years too as well?
Six and a half.
Yeah, six and a half, excuse me. And, you know, I think you've always been one of those board members that have been very supportive. You've asked good questions, tough questions, fair questions, necessary questions, I would say. So, you know, you keep us on our toes, and, you know, I appreciate that. And, but I think, you know, whenever we've had tough decisions to make, you've been there, supported us, and, you know, that's, that's very, I'm grateful for that because oftentimes people are, have different agendas, but I think you've always been here for the right reasons, and I admire that, and I'm happy that, and we will certainly miss you. I will miss you. So I wish you all the best.
Thanks, Bruce. Thanks.
I'd just like to say that I was lucky enough to have three of your, of your four children, so I think I've known you for way longer than six years. And, you know, I, I think you were at, you and your husband were at every single parent-teacher conference, and your children were always wonderful to have in class. We always, teachers felt supported by you and your involvement, and so from that perspective of knowing you for that long, and just having you and your children and your husband as a part of the community.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks.
With that, Patty. Leo. Present this to her.
Thank you.
Small, little bit of appreciation.
I, you know, I just want to say, seven years ago, when I was approached to, to join the board, I, I really had no idea what to expect. I was hearing something from the, the teachers' education, from the union and from the board members. They were, it was like two different things being said about the same thing. And so I thought, you know, "Well, I'm gonna come on and help improve communication." Well, you know, there's so much that goes on in this board, and I have such an appreciation for serving on the board now, Board of Education, and so appreciate the, all the work that board members put in. James, all your hard work, you know, behind the scenes, you're constantly there, and I, you know, I'm glad to be able to support you in your efforts here. Philosophically, I don't always agree with everything that we have pushed through, but I hope that I have asked questions enough to get people thinking and, and maybe challenging some, some, some things. I don't think focus on diversity causes unity. I think that when we focus on something that we all belong to, causes unity. And I think the fact that we are all Fenton members of the Fenton High School, that's our unifying factor. So I think that's something that we should focus on. I've, I've enjoyed, I've been challenged, I've, I have enjoyed being on the board. It's been a really good experience. So thank you all. Thank you all for adding to my experience here, too. Thanks.
It's not a vodka.
Oh, it's not vodka. I'd go for a beer or a second. What is this? Oh, it's the stand?
Mary's over there wishing you would, you would love it. Look at her.
No. Oh. Oh, it's an apple? That's silver apple. Oh, it's very nice. Representing the school. Nice. Thank you very much.
Sit down there with your name on it.
Oh, look at that. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Eric, could you take a picture so Rick could be in this photo? Jim, let's take a photo with Patty.
This has been harder than I thought it was gonna be. And just so you know, for the record, I'm moving back home. I'm moving back to Montana where I was born and raised.
Mary, Jim, come on down. Right, right there. Mary, get in there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, James, and thank you, Mrs. Jallowick. We got the informational items, James?
Sure. I'm very excited about this next topic. It's called "The Burger Battle." This is a dynamic presentation by one of our teacher here at Fenton. It's a mix of, of marketing, creativity, cooking, did I say creativity? And, and just good old-fashioned burgers. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce Lewis, and he brought a couple of students and a parent, one student here to talk about the burger battle. Give him a hand, guys.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am nervous, just like my student. I don't think my students have seen me this nervous before, because actually, it's actually my first board meeting.
All right.
So ever, because my second year as a teacher. But I'm happy to be here tonight, and I wanted to let you guys know about what we're doing in our business class, because we have taken the business orientation class, which is the fundamental class to the business program. And I've taken it to the next level because I really have, I'm a very creative person. So, and we have a good community that is able to support us in every project we want to do. So far, any ideas that I have brought up, they're like, "Yes, go for it," you know? So that's really helpful. But we are, we're doing a battle burger. We can hit the next slide. All right. What is a battle burger? Well, the battle burger is, it's a project that students are involved in. They are broken into groups, and they're taking all of this business material, such as marketing and pricing, and spotting the opportunity, being creative. So they created, I have, I have two classes. Mr. Rich White has another business orientation class. We combine all three classes together so that each class can come up with different burgers to be made by our partners here in our local community, which is Green Street Griddle. They were, said like, "Yes, we would love to be part of this project." So each, each class, they did a bunch of surveys, says like, "What would you like on your burger?" And they took that, all the creativity together, and then they finally come up with their final one. All staff members and students took a vote. We had over 300 votes, so it was really successful. We narrowed it down to three burgers, and now these three burgers are gonna be sold for three days, starting tomorrow, Friday, and Saturday at Green Street Griddle. Students have been done the marketing, which Innocent, my student, she's gonna talk about more about the marketing, and the top winner, the burger with the most sales will win the competition. They did pricing for the burgers, calculating the cost of every single burger. And without further ado, go ahead, Tom.
Hi, I'm Innocent Miller, and I'm in Mr. Garcia's seventh-period business class. So from the project, we were learning basic marketing tactics and all behind the scenes throughout what it takes to have a business. And from there, we learned many marketing tactics, and it was the three Ps. It's the product, price, and promotion. So from there, we had to come up with various ideas to advertise, and we did this in a very safe environment, making sure that there was, everything got cleared to pass through with all these things. So one of, how we spread it throughout the community and to get more people intrigued into the competition, we had posters. Tonight, staying after school at a basketball game to advertise, give out flyers, go around the community, post yard signs. We even used the school announcements to announce our project and how hard we've been working. And we've also used social media, because that's a huge thing nowadays. So from there, we took that to our advantage to get more customers. My class had the honor to, of experiencing business in a safe environment. We were able to learn marketing tactics, like I once said, and we learned basic strategies that we will need to have a business of our own. And like Mr. Garcia once mentioned, you can show up and support starting tomorrow through Saturday, and you guys should definitely try the Monstrela, because that's the one that won. That's my class. But the three burgers that are participating in the competition are the Flavor Bomb, the Real Bun Burger, and of course, the Monstrela. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, board members and staff who came tonight. Appreciate it. Any questions? All right. Hope to see you there.
I'm gonna challenge all the board members to at least get one burger, especially the Monstrela. But if we would like to take a picture with you, and for all the folks who are watching this, this is part of the marketing, so I'm gonna mark it for you. Please go to Green Street Mill, Green Street Grill, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Support Fenton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is mom here too? That was an awesome presentation. The three Ps.
I'm the tallest. Don't worry. I'm good.
I'm assuming there's a lot of Monstrela to it.
Probably a couple of chairs. Are you ready?
Yes. One more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, our nations. He might just smile. The less I play, the better.
So is that, is your burger the one in color?
Yeah, the Monstrela.
Okay. That's all, Mr. James?
Next up is, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Kate Ward in regards to Fenton's high school course catalog.
All right. So it's that time of year where we publish our course catalogs, so you all have a copy in front of you, and you had some highlights in the board book. I'd like to thank Dr. Eric Caranda, who was instrumental in organizing, putting together, and kind of reorganizing some of the books. So there's a lot that goes in there, you're all familiar with it. What I'd like to do is go through the new courses and highlight those. I'm not gonna read every course description, but to just kind of give you a highlight of what is new and exciting in the course guide. Okay, so we'll start with the introductory courses. So introductory courses, and Michelle Papa-Nicholau has walked you all through some of the ways that we're organizing our courses. If you need a quick review of that, you could turn to page 51 in the catalog, but our introductory courses are generally, you know, just what it says. Kids are getting introduced to some of these concepts. The first one that I'm gonna talk about is Foundations of Mathematics. So what we're doing with Foundations of Mathematics is we're responding and being proactive about, about the pandemic. We know that the pandemic disrupted education, and we've seen studies that are showing that mathematics education throughout the nation has definitely been affected. So what Foundations of Mathematics is going to be, it's a course that will be for freshmen who qualify for this due to test scores or recommendations from their feeder schools, and it is going to give them the foundations, mostly of algebra, that's gonna set them up to be successful in math one, two, and three, as they move on. So it's a foundational course, making sure that they get there. Our other three foundational courses that we have are coming from our elective areas. So these courses can be taken by any grade level, although in general, it's mostly freshmen and sophomores who take these introductory courses in the electives areas, but again, open to anyone. The first one, we're really excited about all of them, but we're very, very excited about our first one, which is healthcare occupations. So we know from doing surveys that many of our students are interested in pursuing a career in healthcare. So with this course, it's gonna be taught out of family and consumer science. It's the introductory course, and it's the first course that we have for our health science pathways. So this class will provide an overview of the careers available in healthcare. There will be an emphasis on communication skills, job qualifications, and educational requirements, and career opportunities in the field of healthcare. So there will be a lot of guest speakers, there'll be site visits, things like that. Our next course that we have, again, very excited about, is Intro to Coding. So we know that computer science and coding, this is something that we want our students to have access to. So Intro to Coding is gonna be the first course in our computer and information technology pathway. This course, just like Healthcare Occupations, is a semester-long course and is open to ninth through 12th graders. This class is an introduction to how computers work and communicate, and includes units including sequence, selection, primitive data types, strings, so on. And the programming language in Intro to Coding will be Python. Our last introductory course is music appreciation. So in our musical arts pathways, there's a couple different introductory courses. Most of those, the other introductory courses, the students have to have a background in knowledge, but we, or a background in music. We know that there's a lot of students who are really interested in music who might not have that, so this course is really for those types of students. There will be units in voice, piano, guitar. Students will learn to critique musical performance and listen to different genres of music and do their own research into the genres of their choice. And the course will culminate with students being able to create their own music with online software. We're hoping that this will give students who don't have that confidence in their musical ability the chance to move forward in a musical pathway if they're interested in that.
Can we ask questions?
Um, or we could, wait.
All right, Kate.
Okay. Okay, it's about the introduction. I just don't wanna like lose my train of thought. So this Foundation's in math, so some, like a ninth graders, because, you know, for whatever reason, struggling.
Yep.
Will that count as a high school credit then?
It will.
Or they, will they stop to take one, two, and three?
It will count as a high school credit.
Okay, but is that count as one of their high school math credits that they need for graduation?
It does.
It does.
Yeah. We're hoping that it gives students the ability to get to math three. They will have the ability to get to math three by their senior year, although that's not required.
Right.
But it would allow them to fulfill the full sequence.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to our advanced courses. So advanced courses, again, exactly what it sounds like, students are getting a little bit deeper into the content area. We'll start with advanced coding. So advanced coding is a semester-long course that is meant to kind of piggyback along with intro to coding, which we just talked about. Students do not have to take advanced coding, but we think that many students along that pathway might be interested in it. And it's just taking introduction to coding and going deeper. So some more advanced programming techniques, including functional programming, object-oriented programming, and graphics. And again, this course will be using the language of Python. What we think is with advanced coding, this, the experience in these two courses is gonna better prepare students for AP Computer Science Principles or AP Computer Science A. The next course is Engineering Design, and so that's out of our Applied Technology Department, and this is a really cool course that is really for the kids who have a passion around engineering and think that they're gonna pursue that as a career choice, possibly. So this would be an advanced course in our robotics, engineering, and manufacturing pathway. So in this course, students will work in engineering teams, which is really cool, to apply technology, science, and mathematics. So they're really taking some of those introductory skills they learned about engineering and now applying them and working in groups. It is a two-semester course, that's the recommendation. The second semester is not required, but what that second semester is going to include is the students will engage in long-term engineering projects with outside companies. So again, that real-world experiencing, partnering with outside companies. So a really neat opportunity. Our final advanced course is AP Physics II. We already have AP Physics I. AP Physics II was actually created by the college board a couple of years ago because they realized you can't fit everything in AP Physics I, and so they cut down a couple of the units and said, "We're only gonna get through units one through seven in AP Physics I," and then they've created this course. We have a small but significant number of students who are interested in this course. This would be something that kids would take in their senior year if they've taken Physics I or AP Physics I in their junior year. So some of the things that they'd be looking at is concepts like systems, fields, force interaction, waves, probability. So taking that AP Physics I and going deeper. Still getting, I'm ready for college. Any questions about the advanced courses? All right. Dual credit. So we have two new dual-credit courses, new courses that are also gonna qualify for dual credit. So out of the Business Department, Marketing and Management. This course is for students who have an interest in business, and they would have already had to complete business orientation. So in order to be in this course, you have to have that background. Students will learn management opportunities and effective human relations. They'll perform planning, staffing, financing, controlling functions within a business. The course will emphasize problem-based, real-world applications of business concepts. And so again, I think you can hear the theme is that we're really building these courses that have that real-world element to them. Our final dual, new dual-credit course is Intro to Education. Even though it says it's Intro to Education, which it is, it is a deeper course. The kids have to, this is in our education pathway, so students have to have already taken child development, and this course is unique in that it's introducing students to the American education system, but it's one semester class, but two credits. So the way that'll work is that it's a double-period class. And the reason for that is that a couple times a week, the students in that class will actually travel to our feeder schools to work with teachers, work with students, partner, and actually do kind of like an early student teaching at the high school level. So, you know, we're really excited to be able to offer them that opportunity. And like I said, both of those are new courses to Fenton, but have that dual-credit opportunity for our students. And then the last slide, we have five classes that we currently have at Fenton right now that by next year, we will be able to offer a dual-credit option for them. So automotives, accounting, investment management, culinary two we're working for, and then AP Environmental Science will be able to be an AP course with a dual-credit option. So we're really excited about the movement that we have there. What questions do you have for me?
Thanks, Kate. And I just want to reiterate to the board, and I'll turn it over to you, Carrie, is that when you hear dual-credit, we know it's both credit for the high school as well as the college, but we also have to think about the money folks are saving, number one, and also the confidence they build, creating credit here as well as at the university. Go ahead, Carrie.
Were there any new courses, I guess, in your, was it CTE?
Uh, yeah, so with CTE, um, the applied engineering would be in the CTE division.
Were there any thoughts to expand beyond just engineering to more, I guess, more automotive and more, uh, to expand beyond just, beyond the engineering, because
And like I said, both of those are new courses to Fenton, but have that dual-credit opportunity for our students. And then the last slide, we have five classes that we currently have at Fenton right now that by next year, we will be able to offer a dual-credit option for them. So Automotives, Accounting, Investment Management, Culinary Two we're working for, and then AP Environmental Science will be able to be an AP course with a dual-credit option. So we're really excited about the movement that we have there. What questions do you have for me?
Thanks, Kate. And I just want to reiterate to the board, and I'll turn it over to you, Carrie, is that when you hear dual-credit, we know it's both credit for the high school as well as the college. But we also have to think about the money folks are saving, number one, and also the confidence they build in credit here as well as at the university. Go ahead, Carrie.
Were there any new courses, I guess, in your, was it CTE?
Yeah, so with CTE, the applied engineering would be in the CTE division.
Is there any thought to expand beyond just engineering to more, I guess, more automotive and more? To expand beyond just, beyond the engineering, because at least those courses that aren't really geared towards college pursuit.
Yeah, absolutely. So what we're doing is we're surveying our students, and we're trying to figure out, one of the things that we have to make sure that we're careful of at Fenton is the size of our school. We have to make sure that we roll things out in a way that we can see, okay, what are students going to take? Because if we give too much at once, then it kind of gets diluted, and you might not be able to run those classes. So what we're doing is we're strategically planning where we know that we have capacity and student interest, but we're absolutely looking into automotives, computer science, computer networking, all of those sorts of areas that we're going to monitor what our students have, what our teachers are certified for, and build from there. But yeah, absolutely, we're looking into all those areas.
And to couple what we're offering here at school, as you know, Carrie, is that we also have TCD, that we expanded the program in enrollment. By next year, we have about eighty-six now. We'll have about a hundred. Five years ago, when I became superintendent, we had about fifty. So those numbers continue to increase year after year.
Just inquiring, because college ain't for everyone.
Yeah.
And so, want to capture everyone.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with you.
So is the Calc Three, that's one that's offered through Elmhurst, right? Would that be considered dual-credit? Or because they, would they still get high school credit for that?
That's right.
That's a dual-credit?
Exactly.
Okay. So we have actually more than just those two that are up there? Because the other two are with COD, right?
Right, and actually, I think Automotive is actually already running. It won't just be next year. So yeah, we could add that to the list. Carrie.
I'm a little concerned about the math thing, going back to the math thing. If, because if all the other kids get three solid years of math, math one, two, and three, then those who come in with the Intro to Math, they're, they're missing out then if we don't require them to take one, two, and three before they graduate.
Absolutely. So I think that's something that, right now, we're trying to address those gaps that we have immediately. What we're hoping is that eventually, we can turn that into a summer program to make sure that we have that so that kids can get there. We just don't think that with the pandemic right now and what we're seeing, those kids need that, they've missed a lot that we probably can't address in that summer program.
Oh, I, yeah, I agree. And I mean, they used to have a summer program. What was it called?
Jump Start.
Jump Start, yeah. I mean, that's basically the same concept, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if they come in and they're, and they're doing the intro, then that's like their summer program.
Yeah.
I still feel like they should be required to take three years of math after that.
Yeah, I understand. I, I think that that's something that we'll have to examine because we have the three-year math requirement. That this is where this is. And I think what we'll do is work with those kids to recommend that they move into a math three or a college algebra or whatever, you know, their career or college aspirations take them. But I think that's something we need to keep in mind, for sure.
Okay.
Patty, as students sign up for classes, there's an encouragement period there. Hey, look, that was an intro to, to math one. We really do recommend one, two, or three years of, of math that's not introductory.
And if I remember correctly, you can like test out of that.
Yes.
Right? And then what would they move into?
Are you talking about the?
The intro.
That won't be for all kids. Right, so kids will only be placed in there. And yeah, if they're able to accelerate, they will be able to move into math one more quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I thought I remembered reading that.
Sounds good. Next slide.
Thank you. That is my part.
Thanks, Kate.
Concern Agenda. Do we have any questions and comments regarding the Concern Agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the Concern Agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Discussion, discussion items, action items. Twenty twenty-two estimated tax levy, Bruce.
Yes, just to go through the levy. We talked about this earlier in our finance meeting, but here at the open meeting, we discussed the twenty twenty-two property tax levy. And I wanted to review the levy calendar at the November sixteenth meeting tonight. The board will review, has reviewed the estimated amounts to be levied for the year twenty twenty-two and establishes the public hearing date of December twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. The Truth and Taxation Notice to the public will be published in the Daily Herald on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And at the December twenty-first board meeting, the public hearing, which is necessary due to levy exceeding five percent, recommended adoption of the twenty twenty-two property tax levy to be filed with the DePage County Clerk. So that's kind of how the calendar looks as we go through the adoption process. Just a little bit more in-depth on the truth in taxation law. It does stipulate the requirements of the Board of Education in adopting the levy. It is an estimate that must be approved not less than twenty days prior to adoption. The board must hold, the board, district must give a notice and hold a public hearing if the levy is greater than a five percent increase over the prior year's extension. It must be published in the newspaper between seven and fourteen days prior to the scheduled public hearing. And the public hearing can be scheduled at any time other than the board's budget hearing. So our plan would be to have that hearing prior to the December sixteenth board meeting, regular board meeting. Just to kind of give you the history of the CPIs used for the property tax extension limitation law. We've got the past ten years here. The average is one point nine five percent. If you look at the bottom of that chart, the twenty twenty-one year, and this is based on the CPI of December twenty twenty-one, which was seven percent. Legally, the district can only levy five percent. And that's what we're recommending. The only thing beyond that would be new property. So this would be the twenty twenty-two levy year for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget year. And this is kind of the twenty twenty-one extension and the proposed levy kind of at a glance, side by side, across each fund and what that recommended, proposed levy is. It also shows the extension there, the third column from the left for twenty twenty-one, with an overall rate increase all the way on the bottom. Second column from the left, two point oh oh seven two with the total tax rate. And the extension was twenty-seven, four thirty-two, four fifty-seven, and thirty-six cents. So that was actually what was extended. The levy for twenty twenty-two will be based on the capped funds, which is a couple of lines above that. Total capped funds, the rate was one point nine four eight six. The extension was twenty-six, six thirty-one, five sixty-nine point five five. And that's what the CPI will be applied to that amount plus new property. So moving to the column to the right there, the bolded number in the third column in the yellow header, twenty-eight, capped funds of twenty-eight million, two twenty-nine, five thirty-one. That would be an increase of one point five nine seven nine six, one point four five, one point five million, ninety-seven, nine six, one point four five, which is a six percent increase on the capped funds. When adding in the debt service funds, the overall increase is twenty-eight million, nine seventy-four, seven thirty-one, or an increase, or a change from twenty twenty-one of one million, five ninety, one oh eight point two four, or a five point eight percent increase. So the capped funds were recommending a six percent increase. Overall, when you add in the debt service, which is a modest drop there, it brings the total to a five point eight percent increase. So that's what we're proposing the levy to be. We actually are expecting on this slide, the CPI when applying that five percent and applying an estimate of nine point five million dollars for new property and construction. And that's based on information from the Addison Township and an expiring TIF. It is likely we'll receive approximately five point seven percent or one million, five eighteen, four seventy-five over the twenty twenty-one levy. We're levying slightly more than that to make sure we capture all new property, anything that we're not aware of. So we've, we're recommending a six percent increase, a total levy of twenty-eight million, two twenty-nine, five thirty-one on the tax capped funds, and then an increase of one million, five ninety-seven, nine sixty-one. And that, again, includes an additional buffer to protect the district from any unexpected increase or any changes to the process, levy process. And then again, PTAL will limit the actual tax levy extension. So property tax extension limitation law, kind of better known as the tax cap, that does protect the taxpayers from any increase that might go beyond our legal authority. We can't go beyond our legal authority. And I think this slide does a good depiction of how that tax cap law works. If you look at the past eleven years here, from twenty eleven to twenty twenty-one, the blue bar is the requested amounts for each respective year, in each respective year. The orange bar is the actual extension. And as you can see, the requested amount is slightly more than the actual extension. So the extension comes underneath, and that's where you see the PTAL or tax cap legislation in effect that limits access to the district in terms of what they're only legally entitled to. You can ask for a greater amount, but if you're beyond your means, your legal means, you're going to be restricted always by the tax cap. And this bar graph illustrates that. So we're asking the board to take action on the estimated levy. There is an action item in the, in your board packet to act on the estimated levy that was presented tonight and establish the public hearing date for December sixteenth at the board meeting and the, to comply with the Truth in Taxation notification requirements. Any questions on the tax levy?
I asked earlier, but I wanted to reiterate it because why are we doing a hearing this year versus?
Yeah, we have it in the past couple of years because we've been below that threshold, that five percent threshold. The law states that if you're five percent, greater than five percent, you have to have a hearing. In this case, we're asking for six percent, so a hearing would be required.
No more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approved the twenty twenty-two estimated tax levy as presented? It is also recommended that the Board of Education set the date and time of the Truth and the Taxation Public Hearing for December twenty-one, twenty twenty-two at seven P.M. at Fenton Community High School, Thousand West Green Street, Bensonville, Illinois, six oh one oh six. May I have a motion in a second?
Some more.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Haye?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Shared Services Report, Bruce, again.
All right. This is the report on shared services or outsourcing for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And this is an annual report, perfunctory kind of function that the board acts on. This report is included in the annual financial report that the auditor reviews and prepares in part. This report we produce and put together, and that's included in that report. It is for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And our auditors, of course, follow the, complete the financial audit, and that's when this is completed as well, at that time. Lauterbach and Amon is our auditor, auditing firm, as you know. It requires us to document, the district to document any and all attempts to improve fiscal efficiency through shared services or outsourcing of services. And we're presenting it to the board to be approved and published on our website in addition to filing with the annual AFR. And then we also, the regional superintendent publishes a report summarizing those attempts. So if you look at the actual report itself, this is right out of the AFR. It lists the various service or functions that you're engaging in with other entities or cooperatives, as the case may be. So prior fiscal year and then current fiscal year in the middle of the page there, we haven't had any changes. We continue to coordinate with our elementary districts on curriculum matters. Employee benefits, we're part of an insurance cooperative pool. We're part of an Illinois Gas Cooperative. We contract out our food services. We're part of a workers' compensation insurance pool and our property casualty insurance pool. We're part of our investments. We're part of our, the insurance, Illinois School Insurance Asset, District Asset Fund. We're legal services, we're part of the Tax Consortium Services, entities with other taxing bodies in Bensonville and Wooddale. DePage ROE, we use for a variety of things, including personnel recruitment, shared personnel, professional development, I should say, collaborate with Bensonville and Wooddale, our feeder elementaries. Special Education Cooperative, you're very attuned to North DePage Special Education Cooperative, or better known as NEDSEC. Technology Services, we use a variety of bidding services, Central Management Services, U.S. Communities. Our BMO P-card purchasing credit card, we use, that's part of a shared program with the Illinois Association of School Business Officials. Illinois Learning Technology Purchasing Program. I think Dr. Benson's used that extensively for a variety of different laptops, Chromebooks, and other technical, technology pieces. Transportation, we use our North DePage Septran, Septran and NEDSEC, I should say, as well for special ed purposes, transportation. VOCAD is our TCD, Technology Center for DePage. You're very well aware of that. And all intergovernmental agreements with the Village of Bensonville and Wooddale. And then we also do the newsletters with Bensonville and Wooddale that Mr. Cambeck is very involved with. So those are the items that we do engage with, with other services and collaborate with them for shared services. So we ask the board to act on this and approve it as required for outsourcing for fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Bruce. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the report on shared services or outsourcing for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two?
Some more.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Fenton High School Course Catalogue. Please, again. Well, we reviewed that one already. I don't think we really need to go again.
Quick summary, Kate.
You gonna do a quick summary?
Yeah, so that the course catalog that was presented before, that has the new items in it, and then, once it's approved, then we are allowed to roll those courses out to our students.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Fenton High School Course Catalogue as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haye?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Committee, committee reports. Bensonville Community Foundation?
Nothing to report. We do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
All right. Board of DE Committee?
Nothing to report.
Board Finance Facilities?
Two subjects, well, Bruce has already discussed the tax property levy. But we also discussed flooding mitigation projects to, that we're going to act on. This, these projects will address the flooding on our site, directly impacting the building. It also is going to address improving the football field, the flooding around there and new surfaces. But it will not address the flooding in the northeast corner of our site. That's a, that flooding requires more collaborative effort with entities outside of ourselves. The flooding we are addressing is what we can address within our site in that would protect the, protect the building, protect our investment. But also give us better uses of, for the football field and bring soccer and other things back to our site.
And to reiterate that, you know, we had said that we were going to put in money from our surplus.
Yeah, it's filed through.
Yeah, it's part of the referendum. And so we are putting in the money that we had and will be utilizing. I may not calling it the right thing.
Or balance.
Our fund balance, yes. That we're using this for the flood mitigation, flooding mitigation.
Yeah, we're doing what we can with the funds we have. The problem hasn't gone away, will not go away until we can properly address it. But there are things we can start doing now that are within our means that need to get addressed because the issues have not gone away. The referendum didn't pass, and we respect the will of the voters for that, but the issues have not gone away. The core building is still a 1950s building. For transparency, this issue is going to come up again. We're going to have to watch the economy and the environment and everything else, but the issues did not miraculously disappear. They're still there, they still need to be addressed, and we, as a board, I think are, I don't want to speak for us all, but I think we've all had the same thoughts. We have to do our due diligence and maintain this building and do what we can with the funds we have and continue to move forward. And I just wanted to get it out on the record, the issues did not go away. It did miraculously get fixed overnight, and we're going to keep doing our due diligence to try and do the right things for our students, our faculty, our staff, and our community and be financially responsible, but things have to be done. And we're going to just have to take a different approach to it, but the issues did not go away, and the core 1950s building is still there. And we'll have to address this in the future as we see fit. So I just wanted to get that out there. I'll be the meaning.
And doing this, doing it now has a direct impact on the operation and maintenance, yearly operational cost, maintenance costs of the building that's just progressing, going up over the years. So it would help mitigate some of those costs. Won't correct it, but at least help and stop that damage caused by water that's currently damaging, you know, impacting the site.
Thank you. Board Policy Committee? Thank you. ISB Delegate, IIII Conference 2022 Resolution Committee Report. I want you to take a look at your resolutions. They are recommendations, and I believe we can take it from there. My best understanding, I read all of them, and I'm agreeing with those. And also, there is a little change. Kit not be able to make it. I believe we got to reach Juliette to let her know our point of view. Whatever you want to do, please try to reach Juliette.
So Juliette will be filling in for Kit?
Yes. Thank you. Len?
Nothing to report.
NEDSEC, that is me. Okay. Was there in the meeting last Monday, and it was a special meeting since our director is leaving that position, so more or less I'm going to give it a big applause to James because they were working really hard, tried to look for the new director, and Mr., actually Dr. Todd Woodman is the new director. And also, we got, like any other meeting, we got to approve some revisions, manual revisions, income statements, and I never been in that facility, the Special Education and Lincoln Academy. I see kids from a sixth, eighth graders, seventh graders, ninth graders, high schoolers, and it really break my heart. And also, the attention that the teachers, the nurses are doing that because there is kids that they need special attention 24 hours a day. They changing stations. That really is got to be attention, how they work. And NEDSEC is the best place. Thank you. Our next board meeting is going to be Wednesday, December 21st, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. with a tentative Board Finance Facilities meeting scheduled at 6:00 p.m. prior to the regular meeting. We're going to go into the closed sessions for the purpose to establish or reserve or settlement of claims as provided into the local government and governmental, employmental employee tort immunity act. If otherwise, this position or claim or potential claim might be prejudiced of the review, discussion, or claims loss or risk management information, records, data, advice, or communication from or with respect to any insurer of the public body or any intergovernmental risk management association or self-insurement pool or which the public body is a member. Fight Illinois CS 120 to C12. May I have a roll call, please? Motion, I'm sorry, motion.
So moved.
Second. I was going to ask you to re-.
I want to go home.
Mr. President, pro temp, do we need to note that we will be returning to open session to take action?
Yes, we're going to be back in as open session as soon we feel. Can I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Lewis and Hade?
Yeah.
Okay, that works.
So Rzynski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
7:59.
7:59.
Okay, back in an open session. Do we hear Mr. Curry about that matter? And I don't think we need to go back and listen again. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the settlement agreement and release between the Board and Catherine Lozada to resolve a pending claim filed by Ms. Lozada with the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission and that it authorize the President of the Board to execute the settlement agreement on behalf of the Board. May I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hayde?
Yes.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes, please.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hayde?
Yes.
8:21.
Motion passed. Good night, guys.
And your last?